Good evening, members, officers and members of the public. Before we start the meeting proper, there are a few things I would like to just bring forward. First of all, my thanks for agreeing to the deferment of this meeting to tonight. You may be interested to know that the Southern Meeting actually finished at about twenty past eight, so it would have been a very late start for us following that. Secondly, we have a new planning lawyer with us this evening, so I'd like to introduce Joanna to you, sitting here, rather than give us a wave. For the Southern Meeting, I was asked by the leader to ask you to remember that the procedural rules state that speeches by councillors should be no longer than four minutes. This follows a joint planning meeting in which several members spoke for an inordinately long period of time. We're not going to time you to four minutes, but just gently reminded that inordinately long speeches should be avoided if possible. Finally, then fire regulations on the screen behind me, and please, mobile phones to off or silent. Okay, first item on the agenda is the minute of the last meeting. This took place on the 7th of January, they've been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of the meeting? Thank you very much. Item two, apologies for absence, have there been any apologies for absence?
We have apologies from Stella Anderson-Payne, Martin Lear, Jennifer O'Grady, Julia Potts, Roger Steele and Stephen O'Grady, he might be late, but apologies if he doesn't come, thank you.
Thank you. Item three is declarations of interest. Emma, have any members declared any interest before the meeting?
A number for the meeting, Chairman.
Members, anybody wish to declare anything at this point? No, good. Question from members of the public, have there been any questions received?
Number six, Chairman, thank you.
Item five, my notes say to ask Matthew, but since he's not here, I'll ask Elizabeth. Have there been any updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting?
There have been none in relation to the items on this agenda, thank you, Chairman.
Item six, Thames-based in Heath Special Protection Area Position Statement on Current Capacity. Table printed in the agenda has been updated with the latest SANG figures. Elizabeth, would you like to add anything to this?
There's nothing to add to the report, and the report is for noting, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, I'd just like to remind members that at the last meeting, Roger Steele raised a doubt as to the validity of our SANGs policy on the basis of comments received from Natural England about its effectiveness, and councillor Potts agreed to take it through to the portfolio holder for planning and to report back. Unfortunately, neither councillor Steele nor councillor Potts are here this evening, so I think we'll have to carry that forward to the next meeting. Members, do you have any questions about the SANGs policy? No, okay, thank you very much, are you content to note the update? Thank you. Item seven, quarterly appeals report, Paul Hardwick to introduce this.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chairman. Members, a note that there are a total of seven decisions for the quarter. I'll go through each one, and if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer those as we go through. The first two decisions relate to Lloyd's Bank in Council Street, Farnham, for alterations to the main entrance to the bank. You'll see that the main issue set out there, and that you'll see that the inspector agreed with the council, that the alterations would be detrimental to the character and appearance of the appeal building, but also to the conservation area. The inspector also noted they already had consent for an alternative means of access to the building. That was also taken into account. The third decision at twelve Recusham Hill, again, this was also dismissed for an infill dwelling in the direction of a detached carport. Two main issues identified, and you'll see the inspector agreed with the council in respect of the impact of the dwelling upon the character and appearance of the area, and also that it would lead to a cramped form of development out of character with prevailing pattern of housing in the area. Although the inspector did not agree with the council in terms of the impact on trees or levels of amenity. Decision four was allowed, you'll also see that there was a costs claim, which is also, there was a partial award of costs on that decision. The main issues were for, again, it's for use of land for the stationing of a single gypsy pitch with ancillary development. Two main issues were identified, whether it would be acceptable in principle, but also the impact of the development upon the character and appearance of the area, and also the strategic gap and open countryside. You'll see that the appeals were allowed, and you'll see there the conclusions of the inspector. I think the main issue here came down to the location of the site, and also its likely impact upon the locality and the wider landscape character of the area. You'll see there the inspector did conclude that there would be no unacceptable harm to the character and appearance of the area.
Thank you, Paul, could I interrupt you there, councillor Coburn would like to come in.
Relating to this whole situation, at a previous appeal, the barrister for the applicant stated very clearly that one of the issues in Waverley was that we didn't have enough standard sort of pitches, and therefore, the way to avoid this sort of repeated application was to make sure that what we're providing is above and beyond what is necessary. There's another five, if I seem to recall, in the pipeline coming up in much the same area, and it's gradually, all around Badshot Lee, land that can't be used for anything else is gradually being bought up, and then we're going to get application after application like this, and I just think, I mean, what is our strategy to provide enough pitches so that we can actually protect a lot of this land? You know, we always get into trouble if we talk about the settled community when we're talking about these applications, but the rules do apply differently to the travelling community because of their lifestyle. But, you know, five hard standing, five day rooms on one site in the Green Belt, and five caravans is going to look very much like quite a lot of built-up development in the Green Belt. And I just wonder, you know, what we're actually doing to provide other sites so that we are going to still protect our Green Belt from an unnecessary amount of built form.
Thank you, Chairman. I think probably the answer to that, councillor Coburn, is we, as a council, had done quite a lot of work on seeing whether or not we could increase the supply of gypsy pitches in the borough to meet the requirement for a five-year supply, and we came to the conclusion that we thought we had got to that point. Unfortunately, in relation to this appeal and another one in Allfold, when they were tested on appeal, it was found that the information and the methodology that had been used was not quite as consistent with the recognised methodology as it ought to have been, and so the council had to recognise that it needed to go away and revisit the methodology, and conceded in respect to both of those appeals that, in fact, we weren't able to rely on the fact that we did have a five-year supply of sites. Now, it's a temporary position because the work is still going on, it's a very important piece of work, it's a requirement of the planning authority to provide that supply, and it's going on in conjunction with the local plan work in tandem. But the current situation is that we're not able to argue that we do have a five-year supply of sites, in which case each application is assessed on its merits in relation to council's own policy and the government's policy in relation to gypsy and traveller's sites. And in some instances, we're successful in resisting sites if they're considered to cause harm to amenity, and we won a similar appeal on the site in Allfold that I was referring to, not on the basis of need and supply, but more on its visual impact. The situation in relation to this was slightly different, and clearly the appeal was allowed, but we will continue to assess these applications as they come forward, and sites if there are, do constitute unauthorised development, we'll investigate them thoroughly, and we'll seek to bring them to a resolution. But they have to be considered on their merits against the current up-to-date policy position, and that's all we can do in the current circumstances, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Coburn, please come back.
Well, I was just a little bit worried now whether this is the way it's been summarised or whether it's really true, but we're back to our incremental, which is something, as you know, I worry about, and it's saying that continuing incremental development would erode the strategic gap, but this particular one wouldn't. Well, of course it would, you know, erosion is one little bit at a time, that's the whole point of erosion, so anything in that strategic gap erodes the strategic gap. So, you know, maybe it's the summary that isn't exactly what the inspector said, but if it's what the inspector said, then it doesn't make a great deal of sense.
Thank you, Chairman, I think we would agree with you, and we were obviously trying to argue that very point, but inspectors tend to look at each of these sites on their merits and decide whether or not in the round it's going to erode the gap, and it's a similar situation, as you're aware, as some of the appeals we've been trying to fight in the BE3 area. Rather than taking a blanket approach, saying any more encroachment is harmful, it tends to be on a site-by-site basis, but I suspect the inspector will take the view that that's the way it has to be, because it's got to be on its own individual merits, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, my issue with the inspector's report is to say where he says that the only urban-style building will be the modest utility stroke day room. If you look at the caravan in St George's Road, you would see that that is very much an urban-style building that has been constructed. And I believe the definition of a caravan is something which can be carried on two trailers, and so it's a considerable building, and as I say, in St George's Road, it's been bricked in, foundations, it's very much not a mobile home. Paul, carry on.
So, just to add to the, more from the inspector's decision, where he talks about the countryside and the strategic gap. He does mention the fact that not all of the site will be developed. The site already contains some built development of the type typically found in urban fringe and rural areas, and most of this will be replaced with similarly typical structures. Development would be small-scale, a single-family pitch, and this would represent a minor further extension of what is now the edge of the urban area. So, taking these factors into account and the location of the site, hard against the existing urban edge, in his judgment, that the reduction in openness as a strategic gap would be marginal. So, he took the view that location and scale, the impact, it would be marginal. Decision five, Landoff Wilkinson Way, Farnham, a nursery childcare building. Again, the main issue was the effect of the development on the character and appearance of the area and the final strategic gap. You'll see that the appeal was allowed, and you'll see the inspector saw no objection in principle, and there was no need for an alternative recreational use for the site. His main conclusion was that seen in the context of the overall site, it would cause no harm to the character and appearance of the area or to the final strategic gap. Decision six is a household appeal dismissed for a detached garage store. Main issue was the effect on the character and appearance of the area. You see the inspector's conclusions, and he totally agreed with the council on its reasons for refusal. The final decision is East Street, Farnham, use of an industrial warehouse unit to a leisure use. Then the appeal was allowed. The inspector concluded that although there was conflict with policy in terms of the sequential test on the location of leisure-type facilities which should be directed towards town centres, he wasn't convinced about the loss of the industrial floor space, but also made reference to a number of factors in favour of the proposal, such as employment, and also that it would make use of an existing vacant building. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Paul, any other comments by members? In that case, are you content to note the update? Thank you. The quarterly enforcement reports, Victoria Cholton to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair, good evening. If I could take you to the Western Quarterly Updates on page sixteen. We have land north of River Lane. To give you an update, there is an enforcement report that's been drafted for consideration by the Western Area Planning Committee for the enforcement options on that land, and the target for that is the 4th of March. And Puddlewood, Summerfield Lane, Frensham, we are still awaiting from the inspector at a site visit date. We have chased them several times, and we're still waiting. If I could take you to a couple of the statistics, page seventeen, on table one. The cases on hand between October and December are two hundred and twenty-seven, which is broadly in line with the previous quarters. And if I could take you to page eighteen, table three. The last quarter, October to December, the number of cases actioned within twelve weeks was eighty-three percent, which is just exceeding our target of eighty-two percent. And any questions, I'll be happy to answer, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, any questions? Any comments? No, in which case, are you content to note this report? Thank you very much. Item nine, we move on to the planning applications. Firstly, site visits, in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications of this meeting, these will be held on Tuesday the 3rd of March 2015 at a time to be agreed. Moving on to the planning applications, all of tonight's planning applications are not subject to public speaking. So, item B1, page twenty-three of the agenda, change of use of B1 office to C3 residential, erection of extensions and alterations to main building and detached outbuilding, erection of a detached dwelling following demolition of an existing outbuilding, providing a total of six dwellings on the site at sixty Alford House, West Street, Farnham. And this is going to be introduced by Paul Hardwick.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. The site comprises a detached Grade II listed building, together with a single app building here, located on the corner of West Street with Crandall Lane to the west of the town centre. Access to the site is via an existing vehicle access over here, and an exit onto West Street here. The current lawful use of the building is as officers, although previous users have included its use as two residential dwellings before it became office use. The immediate area is of mixed use and character, which does include a commercial premise here in terms of a public house, a commercial garage workshop here, and various residential properties along West Street and along Crandall Lane. Residential properties to the north are on higher ground. In terms of the block plan, the main dwelling is retained. There is the removal of a conservatory structure and a side structure here, with a single-storey extension on the back here. The app building here is to be extended both on the ground floor and the upper floor to create a single dwelling. And there'll be a new building erected here, again, to provide a single residential unit. So, the main, the proposal comprises various elements, which include the main listed building here. Its change of use, extension alteration to provide four three-bedroom flats. The main extension at the back here. Use will be made of the basement, which is located about here, but also the second-floor roof area of the unit here. This element on the side will be removed. The other element is to extend and alter the building here for one unit, and to erect a new one-bed unit with an integral garage on this site here. The remainder of the site would largely be given over to access and car parking, with some sort of landscaping here and along the site frontage. As I said, the access arrangement through the site would remain as existing. There have been storage areas here and in this location here. The floor areas of the proposed dwellings are set out in the officer's report. The changes to the listed building, as I say, do include, so this is the proposed ground floor plan, the first floor plan, and this is the basement via additional bedroom accommodation. And the loft area planned for one of the flats on the right-hand side of the main building. This is the front elevation of the main building, which largely remains unchanged. Rear elevation shows the new extension here with entrance doors here and here to two of the flats on the upper floor, and the new dormer on the rear next to an existing dormer here. Side elevation to the east, side elevation to the west, which is largely unaltered. This is the detached one-bed dwelling with accommodation on two floors. The front elevation with the carport sort of parking space here. Now, this is a view of the new dwelling as viewed from the neighbour at the townhouse. And just for information, the height of this building, there is an existing boundary wall here, and the height of the building from the neighbour's forecourt level, from there to there would be four and a half metres, but from wall level, eaves level, it would be three metres. But clearly, the ridge line would be set away from the boundary. That's the elevation facing Crandall Lane. The east elevation. This is the outbuilding to the north-east corner of the site, to be extended on the ground and upper floor. This is the element of the building that is to be extended and made higher. At the moment, the building goes along like this of a certain height, which is four point seven metres. This will be increased at this point to five point six metres high. That's a side view. Again, that's east elevation facing the public house. Again, this is the view that would be viewed from the rear garden of the townhouse. Again, garden level is about here, there's a wall, and this will be the main change to the building here. And just for information in terms of height, from garden level to ridgeline would be four point four metres. This would remain as it is at about probably three and a half metres from garden level. Again, that's roof plans. This is the street seen from West Street, the main building, the outbuilding to the north-east, and the new building set back and end on to Crandall Lane. And that's a view from Crandall Lane, the main building and the new building here. The neighbour's house is just faintly, it's outlined here. And they'll see they're on slightly higher ground here. And there is a quite mature copper beech tree on the site frontage. Some site photographs. This is the main view from West Street. You'll see here, this is the nearest neighbour on higher ground to the rear of the site. You see, they've got a living room window here and a bedroom window here. And this is the boundary wall. That's the rear elevation, this is to be removed and replaced. This is a view looking up Crandall Lane. This is where the new building would sit here. You see, that's relationship to the neighbour there. This is the outbuilding to the north-east, this is the element that would be extended and increased in height. And this element here would be removed and replaced by a bin store area. This is a view from Crandall Lane of the existing entrance. Again, the new building would sit here. And you see there the likely relationship to the neighbour here. And they do have some first-floor windows which are mentioned in the report, in the agenda. Further view. That's the outbuilding to the north-east. This is the neighbouring property with its habitable rooms here, and this is the site over here. Again, this is the view from their forecourt window here, and the new building would sit in this position here. And this is a view from the rear of the property, the neighbour. This is the building that would be extended and altered, particularly this location here. That'd be increased to about this height here. That would be increased to about this height here. And this is the end of the public house building. So in terms of determining issues, they're set on the slide before you. In terms of principle of development, the site is located within the developed area of Farnham, wherein the principle of new development is acceptable subject to visual amenity, residential amenity, highway safety, and heritage considerations. The proposal would bring an existing vacant listed building into use unto its former residential use, albeit as four flats rather than two houses. In our view, the proposal would make good use of a previously developed site. In terms of loss of lawful use, in our view, this has been justified with the appropriate marketing information provided. In terms of visual amenity and street scene, officers acknowledge that the proposal with the additional development proposed would have some impact upon the character and appearance of the area. The main impact, in our view, would come from the new detached dwelling on the Crandall Lane frontage. It would be a new feature in the street scene. In our view, there are other buildings close to the road frontage in the vicinity of the site. Officers do not consider the impact to be harmful. In terms of residential amenity, again, officers acknowledge the proposal would have some additional impact upon the amenities of the occupiers of the townhouse, located on high ground to the north. The main issue here is a likely impact upon the outlook and light from the front and rear-facing rooms of this property, and the rear garden area. On the balance of considerations, particularly given the difference in levels, officers do not consider the proposed alterations to the main building or to the new extended out buildings would cause harm to justify refusal. In terms upon heritage, the listed building and its setting and conservation area, we consider there are significant benefits to the listed building, both from return to residential use, but also the removal of inappropriate alterations and extensions with more sympathetic extensions and alterations proposed. This issue is set out in some detail in the officer's report. Highways and parking. Again, the in-and-out vehicle accessibility was hard to be retained. The existing site is largely given over to housestand and parking, some 17 spaces. The amount of parking provided would meet council guidelines, 12 spaces to meet six proposed dwellings. If I just briefly refer members to the update sheet, you'll see that there are two applications for this site. The application before you is for planning permission. We are minded to grant listed building consent on the advice of the ESOI Buildings Officer, and that decision is likely to be issued in the next few days. You see, there's an update in terms of the SPAs and the completion of the legal agreement. A response from the Wildlife Trust, and with that, would you recommend an additional condition? Additional representations from the neighbour at the townhouse, and also from the Farm Society. Also additional comments and submissions from the agent, particularly in respect of the relationship of the proposal to the nearest neighbour. You'll see there, the officer's response to that information and to the representations. And with the additional condition, condition nine, officers do recommend that permission be granted subject to conditions and informatives set out on the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harwick. Can I just ask before I throw this open to members? I couldn't tell from the drawings, what are the ground areas of the two new buildings? They just look very small, so I'm just interested to know what size they are.
Frontage. This is... This is living accommodation. The downstairs toilet. And this is the parking area with the stairs up to the bedroom and bathroom.
I was interested in how many metres they are.
Yeah, the two out buildings generally have an overall floor space of about 56 square metres. That's including both floors. The actual flats within the main building, the largest, would have a floor area of 151 square metres.
Thank you, members. councillor Cowman?
Sorry, I'm trying to persuade the member for council to go first, but... I think this is terrific. This building, as you come into town, is really one of the most noticeable, although it's a small building. As you come in and you come around the roundhouse, it's always been an outstanding building. And there's always been some interesting features, either the wall or whatever, and over the years, there's been changes. I think if I'm right in saying where they intend to put the house that is the one that would perhaps affect the townhouse, there was actually a building there before, before it became a car park. So, you know, it's changed over the years. And I love seeing old buildings being sort of put back to having a use and life. And I think what they're proposing on this site, yes, I wouldn't like to live in one or two of them, but then, you know, we're all at different stages of life, aren't we? Having seen some of the other properties that are available in the town centre, and this is town centre. I know as soon as you get up Crandall Lane, you're into countryside, but this particular part of West Street, you'd have to say is town centre. There's a lovely little cottage opposite, which was done up. I think, again, it had an industrial use at one point, I don't know. But again, you know, it's very much the same, hasn't got a great deal of amenity space. But then you've only got to walk down through... I was going to say Pingley, what's that one down there? The old Crosby Door site, and you're into Bishop's Meadow and plenty of green space. So I think this is a really imaginative way of using this site. Certainly, that little building in the corner, never dawned on me you could actually turn that into a two-storey building, but that could be interesting. I just think, you know, it's exactly what we need in the town centre. We need more imaginative use of the existing buildings we have, and we need to provide the variety of sizes of unit. And we've got somewhere for the bin stores, I won't moan about that. Yes, I would like more amenity space, I always would, but realistically, the site is constrained. It is where it is. It would house some people very nicely at a particular stage in their life. You can walk into the towns the amenities very, very easily from there, it's all a flat walk. And I just think this is an excellent... I look forward to it, actually, because I think as you come in, you'll actually look more attractive than it does at the moment. And it's quite attractive now.
Any other comments from members? councillor Blackdon, you don't want to just say anything?
Unfortunately, due to the fact I'm a relatively new councillor, and although I have patrolled quite a lot of my ward, I had none of the background that had been presented to you that I hoped was going to be presented, but I couldn't have done it myself. And so I'm very grateful for my colleague for having done that job for me.
Thank you. Well, in that case, members, we move on to the recommendation, which is listed on page four of your update sheet. Permission be granted, subject to conditions one to eight, set out on pages fifty-five to fifty-six, and the two informatives on page fifty-seven, plus the additional condition nine, set out in respect of ecology. Can I see those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. That is then agreed. Moving on to item B two. Page fifty-nine of your agenda is the application under regulation three for the erection of four dwellings and alterations to existing access and carpark layout at the former site of garages in Middlefield, Farnham. This is to be introduced by Rachel Kellis. Rachel, would you like to introduce it?
Thank you, chairman, good evening councillors. This application relates to provision of four dwellings, for which the council is the landowner, and is putting all four homes forward as affordable housing for social rent. This is the application site outlined in red on screen for you. Just to the south of Middlefield, and it's currently a car park. It benefits from screening from existing housing and tree planting on the boundaries. An aerial photograph of the site. You'll see the area is residential in character and has a mix of primarily detached and terraced two-story housing. This is the proposed site layout on screen. You'll see the housing takes the form of two pairs of semi-detached dwellings. One to the front of the site, just here, broadly lining up with the housing either side. And a further pair at the back. There's... Each of the dwellings would have its own private garden, you'll see here. And to the rear here. There are two allocated parking spaces for each dwelling. For the houses at the front, that's the parking spaces you'll see just in front, fronting onto the road. And for the back pair, they would have the four units immediately in front. There's sheds within each of the rear gardens, which can be used for cycle storage. There's two communal bin collection points for bin day, and those are just to the side here for the houses at the front. And on this corner for the housing blocks at the rear. There's individual bin stores within the respective plots in addition. Total of sixteen parking spaces are proposed. Eight of those would be available for neighbouring residential dwellings, as existing site is used for car parking. These are the proposed elevations for plots one and two. That's the pair of semis towards the rear of the site. The first-floor side-facing windows would be obscurely glazed. Both pairs feature hip-to-roof forms of gable elements, which add interest to the elevations. These are the proposed floor plans. Both would be two-bedroom dwellings, with a total floor area of around 100 square metres each. These are the elevations for plots three and four, broadly similar to those you've just seen for plots one and two. Plots three and four would actually front onto Middlefield. Again, these are two-bedroom units of a similar layout and scale to those you've just seen for one and two. This shows is an existing photo of the site, and you'll see its use as a car park. The dwellings you'll see in the background are 63 through to 70 Middlefield. The parking, as it exists, is available to local housing, neighbours, neighbouring dwellings in the area. That would be reduced as part of the proposal. However, an existing parking survey shows that it's underused. You can see that from the photograph as well, and that there are sufficient alternative parking available. That said, there would be eight spaces retained for neighbouring dwellings to use. Where this photo is taken, this is roughly where plots one and two would be, into the right. Plots three and four would front onto the road. This area here would be retained as a parking area. The 71 Middlefield is the application site immediately to its right. The housing would broadly line up in terms of the front elevation with this dwelling. You'll see 70 and 71 Middlefield on screen. The front block of houses would be on this side of the site, with the access along next to 70 Middlefield. First-floor window you'll see here, so floor number 71, that's a landing window for information. This is the site viewed from Middlefield. You have the access to your right, and the front block of housing on your left. This gives you an idea of the existing character of housing in Middlefield. The proposed dwellings would be a similar style to what you can see. Here, I've annotated a few key distances, so you can get an appreciation for the relationship with neighbouring properties. You'll see here, there is some potential for views over the rear part of the garden of 71. This would be limited to the rear part of the garden, however, and overall, the proposal is considered to maintain a good level of amenity for neighbouring occupiers. The note determining issues on screen. I'll take you firstly through the matters of principle and technical judgment. The site is in a developed area, wherein development may be considered acceptable, subject to its impact on visual and residential amenities. The proposal would make a contribution to the housing land supply in the borough. The county highway authority have assessed the proposal, and they consider it to be acceptable in terms of highway safety, traffic generation, vehicular access. The proposed level of parking, that's two per dwelling, would be sufficient for the proposed dwellings. And the reduced parking to serve neighbouring dwellings is considered to be acceptable, having regard to the parking survey submitted, which indicates limited use of that existing car park, and the availability of other parking nearby. The proposal would attract an SPA contribution. The housing would contribute to the need for smaller dwellings in the borough, and would make a notable contribution to the supply of affordable housing, in particular, in the borough. The opportunities for new social rented houses in these areas are obviously rare. In terms of matters of judgment, both pairs of houses are considered to be of an appropriate style, scale, and form, which reflect the form and pattern of development locally. Whilst there would be some potential overlooking for a certain part of the garden of number 71, the proposal is considered to be acceptable in respect of residential amenity. Each house would have its own private garden. A condition would be imposed to require a lighting scheme of the rear parking area, as that's quite enclosed, to make sure that that is well lit. Additional verbal update for this item, there is an error in the plan numbers condition with the wrong version included, but this will be corrected within the final decision notice, within amended condition one. I'll take you now to the main agenda to page eighteen eighty-five, where the recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to sixteen and informatives one to five. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rachel. councillor Ward?
Thanks, chairman. Well, I'm the ward councillor for this area, and...
and when I first became a councillor, I was taken on a potted tour of my area and looked at things. And I remember walking into this car park and thinking, what a waste of space. And one of my first questions eight years ago is, why don't we build something here? Because it just shrieks to me for being able to put some affordable housing in. So I am delighted that it's happening at last. I can confirm I often walk into that car park. It is not the most beautiful area, and the photographs you see there are probably about the normal usage of cars. Usually, one of them is either untaxed or broken down, so I think it will be an improvement on the area and the amenity. And we're getting four affordable rented units, which, as was said in the presentation, is a rarity. So I think this is an excellent use of a rundown and underused area, and I thoroughly support it.
Thank you. councillor Frost, can I say thank you for joining us after your previous meeting?
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. My apologies for being late, but I was in committee room one. I know this site extremely well. And this is not the first planning application, is it, that we've had on the site? Because the last one was for two affordable dwellings, which we agreed to. And this was some years ago. And it always seemed to me that it was the most suitable site to get rid of those old garages and put some homes for people there. So I'm delighted it's come before us, and I will be supporting this application.
Thank you councillor Frost. councillor Coburn?
Well, three happy councillors in a row. You don't often get that, do you? I think this is absolutely terrific news again. I was a little bit worried when you said you were going to follow the design of Middlefield too closely, certainly in terms of scale and materials. But I do hope we can have slightly better windows and doors than we had in those days. I think every year we learn a little bit more about what looks good and works well, which is why we're getting rid of these old rows of garages and other bits of parking spaces, which at the time we thought we were doing the right thing. But now, they are outdated, they're scruffy, and it's just a poor use of land. I just think this is a really exciting use of land. I think the parking, given the extra spaces for the other people and the bit on to the road, I think it would just about work. And now, two in a row. I think these are both quite exciting tonight, so far.
Any other members wish to make comments? No? Okay, then we move on to the recommendation, which is on... I've lost the page number. It must be eighty-four?
Chair, before I move on to the recommendation, can we be sure that when they're being built, that, you know, it is quite a close community there? That the builders, the people who are building the houses, take account of the people who live there and do it well? So that we don't have complaints about no grass left and lorries about five o'clock in the morning? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Frost. I'm just looking to see if there are conditions in that nature already. I'm sure that's a normal building control.
Chairman, there is condition ten and also condition fourteen, control the construction process. But as a council's own development as well, we do have the added bonus of being influential in the actual development of the site as well. So we shall ensure that the neighbours' amenities are protected in the process. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, in that case, the recommendation is that, subject to the consideration of any additional representations or consulting responses received by the twenty-eighth of January, 2015, and subject to conditions one to sixteen on pages eighty to eighty-four, and informatives one to five on pages eighty-four to eighty-five, and that includes the amended condition one, as Rachel outlined, permission be granted. Can I just remind councillor Frost that unfortunately you missed the very beginning? And I know you said you would support it, but... Thank you. Can I see those in favour of granting?
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. That's agreed. Item B three, on page eighty-seven of the agenda, for the display of illuminated signs at contact house East Street, Farnham. This is going to be introduced by Gemma Patterson.
Thank you, Chair. Just bear with me, councillor, while I bring the right plans up. So the site forms a takeaway located to the south of East Street. The surrounding area of East Street is in a mixed juice with commercial and retail uses to the south and residential uses to the north and west. The current application seeks advertisement consent for two externally illuminated fascia signs, shown here and here, and a projecting sign to the front elevation of the building. The proposal also seeks permission for an edge illuminated poster sign, which would be behind the glass of the front window, and also etched vinyl logos, which will also be behind the front glazing. This is a detailed of the projecting sign. And this is a detail of the illuminated poster board sign. And the non-illuminated etched vinyl logos. This photograph shows advertisement on the site in connection with the previous A1 retail use. And this photograph shows the current level of advertising on the site, which does not benefit from any advertisement consent. Permission for this site was previously refused for advertisement consent. And these slides show the level of advertisement refused under the previous application. Concerns were raised in relation to the previous signage with its number, size, colour and extent of illumination. It's considered to be a dominant impact on the host of the building and incongruous feature within the street scene. This was a proposed sign on the east elevation of the building. Looking to the left of the slide, matters of principle and technical judgment. Are the principles of development, having regard to the site's location within a developed area of Farnham, and the planning history of the site, noting that the proposal seeks to address concerns raised by officers under a previous refusal for advertisement on the site? Members are being asked to exercise their judgment in regard to the visual and neighbouring residential amenity impacts of the proposed advertisements, having regard to the amended scale of the proposed signs, the trough lighting design of the illumination, which would direct light towards the fascia signs in order to prevent glare or overspill, and considering the surrounding commercial context in which the site sits, where advertisements, both illuminated and non-illuminated, are present. The test for members is having regard to the changes, whether the current proposal has overcome the objections to the previously refused scheme and is acceptable in their own right. There is no update to this application, therefore the recommendation remains, as shown on page one oh two of the agenda. That consent be granted, subject to conditions one to nine, as set out on pages one oh two, one oh four of the agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Gemma. Over to you, members. councillor Hill?
Yes, the... Mr. Chairman, the comparison with the previous use, of course, is not relevant, I would suggest, because that was only open during normal retail hours, where this business, of course, is open until late every day. And it has been suggested, I think at the previous meeting, that the opening hours were actually a lot later than were originally stated. And of course, we don't actually know whether this is true or not. But this is the general view, is this is open late. And in my opinion, the suggested lights will still be excessively bright and will be causing problems for the people who live opposite. And I don't think this is appropriate for this particular building either, which is a character building in the area. And it wouldn't lend itself ideally to these kind of illuminated signs.
councillor Coburn?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I couldn't agree more. This site's just been an unmitigated disaster. We flagged up all the things that would go wrong, and sure enough, we're ticking them off one by one as they've gone wrong. And you can't, as councillor Hill has just said, you can't compare the uses. They're totally different uses, totally different clientele, totally different hours. I mean, the two things are chalk and cheese. And the other commercial uses there, the retail uses, all lie back from the road and all have a very discreet sort of car park. You go in, you do your shop, you come out, and the effect on the neighbours, and again, it's nine to five, nine to five thirty, is minimal. What we have here is a business that wants to shout that it's there. I mean, it's resondent, it's got to fight with the other people. But at night, it's lit up like the Queen Mary already. You know, you go along and the lighting is huge. I mean, I have heard, and I think this is a joke, but you could actually save electricity if you live in the flats opposite, because you could read a book by the lights from Papa John's. You don't have to put your own lights on. You know, it is very close to residential, this. And that is why we, as a committee, did not want it to go ahead as a takeaway. Because there was residential, all the way, some lovely flats opposite and some to the west, as you say. And all of these people's lives is being affected by this business. The noise, the smells, the litter, all the things that we flagged up would happen if we allowed this to become a takeaway. Traffic's an issue. People don't park where they should park. When we started, we said, whoops, gone. There were three parking spaces. All of that's absolutely... They just don't do it. Here we've got lighted, illuminated signs, which are already, as I say, greatly illuminated at the moment. I don't think it matters what we give them permission for. I think they'll do their own thing. But I can't support this. If this business wants to really be a good neighbour in this area, then it has to start talking to residents and making what it does a little more subtle and user-friendly for the residents who live nearby. Because at the moment, it's a really antisocial business.
councillor Ward?
Thank you, Chairman. Just looking at the photo on page eighty-nine of current signage on site, not even terribly comfortable with that. But, I mean, we've got that and we have to live with it. I'm sorry, I don't think this is the place for illuminated signs and things like that. And I've heard nothing that would change my mind from my earlier councillors. So I am minded not to agree to grant this.
councillor Black?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I agree entirely with what has been said. And there are many aspects of it that... One that has not been mentioned or pushed too hard this evening is the fact that it is not really a takeaway, because the problem is that they don't go away with what they've just taken, if you understand what I mean. You know, they just cluster round there. And so you've got a fairly large number of clientele who require... It's their sort of club. But it doesn't make for a good neighbourhood. And so I'm afraid to say, I think that that is one of the risks that I have no doubt was predicted and I have no doubt has come to pass. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? I'd just like to add my own backing to everything that has been said. If you travel down East Street any time after eight o'clock, it's a beacon sticking out amongst the quiet residential area. I say eight o'clock because Majestic closes at around eight o'clock, so... No, no, I'm saying that that's still lit at eight o'clock, but after eight o'clock, it's gone. The question one might ask is, the existing lighting scheme is already so bright, is this actually going to make a difference? But I'll leave that to you in your decision-making. Any last questions before we move on to the recommendation? No, in that case, the recommendation is that consent be granted, subject to conditions one to nine on pages one hundred and two to one hundred and four, and an informative on page one hundred and four. Can I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant? That would be zero. Can I have those against?
Yeah, that's a three, that's seven.
Okay, that is then rejected. We now need to have a short discussion as to an alternative recommendation, to say that we refuse to grant this on the grounds of neighbouring amenity, presumably. Any other comments?
May I suggest neighbouring amenity, impact of light generally? And I'm sure the officers will find a phrase for this: it's hideous.
I'm not sure that quite counts, but...
Thank you, Chairman. I think we could probably put some words together to capture members' thoughts, if you would like us to. I think Gemma has some suggested wording. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, members. Having listened to the conversation, I would suggest the following reason for refusal. The proposed advertisements, as a result of their number, size, colour and extent of illumination, would visually dominate and clutter the building, appear as prominent incongruous features within the street scene and attract from the character and appearance of the wider surrounding area, as well as causing harm to the amenities of occupiers of residential properties. As such, the proposed adverts would conflict with policies D1, D4 and D10 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, the requirements of the Town and Country Control of Advertisment Regulations 2007, the Farnham Design Statement 2010, the Shopfronts in Waverley Design Guidance and the requirements of the MPPF 2012 and MPPG 2014.
Can I just say, isn't it amazing how much better it sounds when an officer gets hold of it? Right, we... Sorry, councillor Black, then.
Only to say, congratulations on your high-speed... Making high-speed sort of sympathetic thing. The one thing that I think I would like to see included somehow is that the timing, that the lights themselves are turned off at a particular time at night, rather than being on for longer periods. I think somehow I'm going to be shot out of the water.
Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairman. I think the fact that you've resolved to refuse, you're refusing in principle these signs. If the applicants were to appeal, then the debate about how long the signs were illuminated would be a matter for consideration at an appeal. So I think the wording that's been captured basically indicates that whatever time they're on, they are harmful, in your opinion. And I think that concern has been captured, in my opinion. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. In that case, we move on to the recommendation to refuse this planning application on the grounds as expressed by Gemma. Can I have those in favour of the recommendation?
Yeah, that's unanimous.
That is then agreed. Thank you. We move on to B four, which is also Gemma Patterson. Fourth application is on page one hundred and five of the agenda. It is the erection of a detached dwelling and garage at land adjacent to forty-five Fergrove Hill, Farnham. Gemma?
Thank you, Chair. The site itself forms a plot within a cul-de-sac of four dwellings, all of which share an access off Fergrove Hill. The site was formerly side garden curtilage associated with number forty-five Fergrove Hill. As should be noticed, that planning permission has already been granted on the site in 2014 for a two-storey dwelling, and that the current application seeks permission for a similar dwelling. The differences between the previous approval on the site and the current application are: the repositioning of the dwelling 1.2 metres further southwest in the plot; raising the roof height by 0.4 metres in order to provide habitable second-floor accommodation, which includes the insertion of roof lights in the northwest roof... which includes the insertion of roof lights in the north-west roof slope and roof light in the north-east roof slope, and a roof light in the south-west roof slope. A one point, sorry, a one-metre reduction in depth of the proposed dwelling from that previously approved is also proposed, and a modest increase in the overall scale, form and height of the garage from that previously approved. The design and materials of the proposed dwelling would remain similar to those as previously approved. The test for member here is having regard to the established principle of a dwelling in this site and the extant scheme, whether the changes made to the proposal are acceptable in their own rights. The following slides show the elevations approved under the previous planning application. And here are the proposed elevations. It's very faint, but you can just see the outline of the previously approved dwelling. However, there will be some bigger ones coming up. These are the floor plans approved under the previous planning application in comparison to the current proposed floor plans. As you'll see, there is now a second floor plan with habitable accommodation. And this is the double garage approved under the previous planning application in comparison with the proposed garage. This shows a comparison of the north-west elevation. This is the elevation that will face number forty-five Fergrove Hill. The outline in red is the extent of the built form under the previous approval and the black line is the current application. So that will give you an indication of the differences between the two. This is just showing a retained distance of seven point eight metres between the, joining, sorry, the neighbouring property, number forty-five Fergrove Hill, and the site. This is the street scene as approved under the previous planning application. And this is the proposed street scene. Just see here, this line here is the previous approved ridge height in comparison with the new ridge height. The following photographs show the east of the site. This is now facing number forty-five Fergrove Hill. And this is the south of the site. This will be facing number forty-five A Fergrove Hill. So this would be the approximate location of the garage. This is the site taken from Fergrove Hill itself. So this is the entrance to the cul-de-sac, and the house would be sighted here. And this is a closer view from the access into the cul-de-sac. So you can see the relationship between the proposal and the neighbouring property. Looking to the left of the slide, the matters of principle and technical judgment are the principle of the development, having regard to the site's location within the developed area of Farnham, the planning history of the site, noting that permission for a similar dwelling remains extant on the site and can be implemented, subject to discharge of condition, the council's current housing land supply, which is a material consideration to this application, highways and parking provision, to which county highway authority have raised no objection, subject to conditions, and the effect on the SPA, to which a contribution has been secured by way of a legal agreement. Members are being asked to exercise their judgment in regard to the visual and neighbouring residential amenity impacts of the development, again, having regard to the previous history of the site. Just like to say, members, there are now two oral updates to this report. The first update is the council approached by the owners of number forty-five Fergrove Hill in relation to land ownership. Although the council do not become involved in third-party land disputes, further investigation into this matter demonstrated that the red line outlining the application site was slightly incorrect in comparison to the land registry plan provided by the applicants to demonstrate ownership. Officers have therefore accepted a slightly amended site location plan, which now shows the land within the red line to be wholly within the applicant's ownership. Officers are therefore satisfied that the applicant has completed the correct certificate of ownership in accordance with the statutory procedures. With regard to the second update, page one hundred and twenty-four of the agenda advises that at the time of publication of the agenda, the county highway authority had not commented upon a construction method plan submitted by the applicant in support of the proposal. There have since been no further comments from the highways authority on this matter. And as such, it's therefore considered reasonable, in the event of an approval, to recommend a condition to secure the highway authority's full assessment of this plan. The condition would form, condition twelve, to any approval and would read: No development shall start until a method of construction statement to include details of parking for vehicles of site personnel, operatives and visitors, loading and unloading of plants and material and storage of plant and material have been submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority. Only the approved details shall be implemented during the construction period. Taking the above into consideration, officers' revised recommendation is that, subject to the amendment of condition one shown on page one hundred and thirty to secure the amended site location plan and the addition of condition twelve, securing a method construction statement, that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to eleven, as set out on pages one hundred and thirty to one hundred and thirty-three of the agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Members. councillor Hargreaves?
Thank you, Chairman. If the, the application of 2013 were brought to us again, I think nowadays we would comment and say that it was garden grabbing because it was part of forty-five. Be that as it may, we are now faced today with an even larger house to consider. In order to accommodate what they would like to include in their house, they've actually brought the house forward towards forty-five. They've actually also built windows in, in the roof, which will immediately look directly into the two rooms, yes, if you go back a bit. Those windows will look directly into the upstairs rooms of forty-five. What this new development, this proposed development is now doing is taking away the amenities of number forty-five. It's daylight and it's sunlight. And privacy, absolute privacy. I know it's only a one to two-metre difference, but that makes a huge difference when the house is even bigger. Not only is it bigger, it is higher. And it dwarfs number five. And if you look at all the other rich heights of the existing houses, they're not as high as this one. They're all built on a hill. And because it's bigger, it's higher. I mean, there has been suggestion, if they really wanted to do it, why not have the windows on the other side of that particular house and bring the ridge height down? That's only a suggestion. But at the moment, I think it's going to impinge on the amenities of the neighbours. And just recently, we've been having quite a few developments coming in and the developers don't seem to pay too much attention to the local people who live there. So I really cannot support this proposed development. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hargreaves. Any other councillors wish to make comments? councillor Coburn?
I just really wouldn't like to start from here, you know, that's how I feel about this. You know, there is an extant planning permission on this plot, which I don't think is suitable for a house at all, but the permission is there, so I have to accept that. I can remember this plot when it was first being suggested for development and I always feared it would sort of be slightly overdevelopment. And certainly, this site, I still think it's too small for the, for the previous planning permission, but be that as it may, it's got it. I don't know whether the changes are that different. I don't know the area as well as councillor Hargreaves. I have a dreadful feeling the damage has already been done in terms of, you know, I honestly don't think we'd be able to defend ourselves on appeal with the relatively minor changes. I accept everything councillor Hargreaves says about a metre to some people means a great deal. But in the great scheme of things and given the planning system, I'm not sure we can turn this down with the extant permission.
councillor Frost?
Thank you very much indeed. Unfortunately, I'm with Carol Coburn on this one. I don't think we ought to have had a house there in the first place, an additional house, because it makes that area very, very crowded. But having already given permission for a dwelling there, the extant permission, I think we will be very unwise to actually not allow this. I don't think we can justify it if we went to appeal. Now, I'm a great believer in going to appeal on things if we don't think they're right. But I think, having given the permission for the previous application, we will be sorely tried on this one. And I don't think we will get away with it. I think that it will be overturned on appeal.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay. I'll move on to the recommendation. This, this might be slightly mangled because, I'm going to be giving it, thank you. I've got scratchings out and writing in on my page. Right, the revised recommendation is that, subject to the amendment to condition one shown on page one hundred and thirty of the agenda, to secure the amended site location and site layout plan, and the addition of condition twelve, securing a method of construction statement, that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to eleven, set out on pages one hundred and thirty to one hundred and thirty-three of the agenda. May I see those in favour of the recommendation?
One, two.
And those against?
One, two, three.
And those abstaining? The application has failed. And once again, we need to have a resolution to refuse the application on, and the grounds of which the refusal is to be made. Could I have some suggestions, please?
Loss of amenities for the neighbours, light, the ridge, ridge height. Density, thank you. Yes, I'm sure you can. I think, I mean, it's amenity, density, ridge height. Overdevelopment of the land.
Chairman, again, we've listened to the comments and I think we've put together a reason which hopefully captures your thoughts. One thing I would guard against, that actually, given the footprint of the extant scheme, that overdevelopment probably wouldn't stack up. I think there are other grounds that you should concentrate on in respect to the relationship with the neighbour and the difference in height and the new windows. So I wouldn't recommend overdevelopment, but Gemma's going to suggest including overbearing form, which I think probably captures the concern you raised. Thank you.
Okay, Members, for consideration then for a reason for refusal. As a result of its sighting scale, form and proximity to the side common boundary, the proposal would cause detrimental harm to the amenities of the occupiers of forty-five Fergrove Way by loss of light, overlooking and overbearing form. Accordingly, the proposal would be contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, the council's residential extensions SPD and the requirements of the MPPF 2012.
Could I just check one thing in that? I thought this was Fergrove Hill and I heard you say Fergrove Way.
Sorry, it is Hill. Thank you, Chair.
Right, ladies and gentlemen, then, could I see those in favour of the recommendation to refuse this application on the grounds set out by Gemma?
That's five in favour.
And those against?
One.
And those abstaining?
One.
Okay, in that case, it is agreed that we refuse this application. We seem to have been here a long time, but we've still got one more to go. B5, this one is being presented by David Alaby. Page one hundred and thirty-five of your agenda. Erection of an industrial building, together with parking and landscaping, following demolition of the existing building at seventeen A, the Farnham Trading Estate in Water Lane. David, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Chair and Members. Let's get my papers together. Right, this is an application for replacement of an existing factory building. The site lies to the south side of Water Lane and it's within an established industrial estate, the Farnham Trading Estate. The building currently comprises of a rectangular building with a single access point off Water Lane. The building is in B1 use and the proposal would be within the same use. The surrounding area is industrial and the site is bounded by storage units, storage buildings and also warehouse buildings. The floor areas are set out in the report, which accompanies this application. In terms of layout, the building would be set back from the frontage of the road, the frontage of Water Lane just here. It would be set further back than the existing building and it would move further to the rear of the building along this area here. Sorry, along this area here to the rear, which is bounded by the A31 motorway. If I got a next picture, this is a photograph of the existing building showing the parking arrangement at the front and a single access over this side and the neighbouring building alligator storage premises. On the east side of the application site, there is Deuce and Building premises. As you can see, it's well screened from the application by a line of trees and shrubs. I'll move on to the next photograph. This is a photograph showing the access into the site, adjacent to the eastern boundary. Sorry, adjacent to the western boundary. That's the arrangement currently and these are the buildings that line the route. To the right of the shot, this is a photograph of the rear of the building. On the other side here is the A31. There is some screening here, which is not evergreen, as you can see. Move on. This is a shot of the, is the planned elevations of the existing building showing the variation in form right through the length of the site. This is existing site layout, showing the actual existing building running down the length of the site. I've gone to the next shot, which, hold on. So this is a plan of the proposed building. Members will note that the building is set back considerably greater than the existing building to allow additional parking at the frontage and it's set further back to the rear of the site, with the rear part of the site being wider. In terms of the comparisons, the proposed building represents a modest increase in the overall floor space, approximately two hundred and forty square metres. These are the proposed elevations of the building. Different approach, the building would be clad right across the side elevation and on the frontage as well. And this type of design runs right through. This is another shot of the elevation. This is a rear elevation on the corner here. And this is a section of the building running through here. The floor plan is shown here on this shot. And there's an additional level, the upper level, which is shown here. In terms of matters of principle, as stated, this is in... In terms of matters of principle, as stated, this is an established industrial area, so the use of the building for light industrial purposes is acceptable in principle. In terms of highways and access and parking, the proposal provides an additional access or egress from the site, over and above the existing access, which means that there is an access point, an additional egress point into the site, from the site, sorry, which allows movement into and out of the site in forward motion. At present, you have a single access, which does cause some conflict at times. Moving on, matters of principle, the proposal is subject to infrastructure contributions, which have been provided and signed up to. I'll elaborate on that on the oral update. In terms of design and visual amenity, the proposal is considered to be acceptable in design terms. Impact on neighbouring occupiers is considered to be not significantly greater than the existing impact. The neighbouring premises are industrial and warehouse buildings, which are well screened by vegetation along the boundaries. Moving on to the next issue, members will note the written update to the application. This written update appears on page 151 of the agenda, and it revises one of the conditions to the application, condition 18. At a late stage, officers were approached by the applicants who stated that they would need to operate throughout, basically on a 24-hour basis, because of the nature of the equipment that they operate. Since that time, officers have been approached again with further queries about the operating times, and they've stated that they require unfettered opening hours, and the purpose of that, they say, is because they need to be able to constantly maintain the machinery at the premises. However, officers consider that unfettered hours of operation would be unreasonable, simply because officers have not had the opportunity to assess the impact of unfettered opening hours on the surrounding area. Should planning permission be granted for the proposal, the applicants could come forward with a variation of the condition under section 73 of the Act, and officers would be in a position then to have a full assessment of the impact of the 24-hour opening as requested by the applicants. Thank you, members.
A forest of hands, I can't call on the Ward member, because that's me. I'll start with councillor Frost, since I saw her first. No, I'll put my two pennies in if it's not covered by anybody else.
I think the design is awful. They could at least have done what they had with the existing building, which is put a small pitched roof on it, to make it look much more interesting. The flat roof looks terrible on there. My problem is, and I do agree with the officer, that we should not allow unfettered opening there, but my problem is that we are replacing a warehouse that's already there. Therefore, to refuse the application could be difficult, but if other members agree that the design looks awful, and we ought to make some changes, maybe we could defer, and the officers could go back, I know it's a warehouse building, but it's an attractive area around there, and we want to keep it nice. We could go back to the applicant and say, could you do a variation here? But I don't agree with unfettered opening, I'm afraid.
Councillor Coburn, I think you were next.
Thank you. I mean, I'm not a lover of the design, I thought it was rather a generous word for the building, but I have no issues with it because of where it's going to sit. You know, this is a completely industrial area, and a lot of the units are out of date, and one thing I think we need to intensify in the borough is some of our employment use. We haven't got a great deal of extra space for it, but if we can intensify what's already there, then we should gain, yes, I don't like the design, but I wouldn't turn it down just on the design because of where it's going to be, and actually, I wouldn't, I'm afraid I disagree with councillor Frost. I'm all for unfettered hours for business, and I think this idea that business, you know, in this day and age could be done neatly between nine and five is just not on, and, you know, I personally would give them completely unfettered opening hours, but I'm sure I'll be unique on that. I just think it's so important that we get some life into these old industrial areas within the town, and make sure that businesses like Kinisterold actually stay there and provide the employment. Heavens above, we're going to have enough new people, they've got to find something to do, haven't they?
Councillor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I agree, that does look worse than industrial, it really does look horrible. Maybe it's because it's in black and white, and maybe it might look better in colour, I don't know, but I would really support deferring this and having another little chat with the applicant to see if they can improve on that, because, okay, it's a factory, but a factory doesn't have to be hideous. They could improve on that, and I note in the reasons for 24-hour opening, they say to allow maintenance of machinery on a 24-hour basis to avoid breakdowns. Well, I would have no problem with them maintaining machinery, I don't think I'd particularly have a problem with them working inside on a three-shift basis, if they're going to be a successful business, this seems good. It's the difference between being open, if you like, and trucks rolling up and delivering things at three o'clock in the morning, and people inside a closed building getting on with a valuable job. So, I think perhaps we're maybe slightly confusing, or maybe the applicant is opening hours with working hours, as long as they don't have deliveries and things clattering in all through the night and disturbing everybody, you know, if they're a successful business, I would support them, but I really quite like Mrs Frost, councillor Frost's idea of asking them if they could tidy it up a little bit, because we'd like to grant it, but we find it difficult at the moment.
Councillor Blackdon.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think the thing that, I am not all that enthusiastic about unfettered timings, but it depends very much on what is being done, and what the purpose of the factory is, and whether the product being made requires 24-hour operation, because in some cases, in a case where you've got, things have to be cooled down or heated up over a period of time, or else where shift work is absolutely necessary, then, fine, unfettered, they've got to have the unfettered access that they ask for, but can I suggest that the operators are asked for reasons why, and maintenance, for me, is not really good enough. You don't spend 12 hours of the day maintaining your machinery, or else the machinery is the wrong one. So, but there must be some good reason for the process to require, to be carried on a 24-hour basis. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Any, councillor Hill?
Well, it's good to know that a local business is doing well, unfortunately, I don't know what a pneumatic actuator is, but it's good to know they're made in Farnham. I've been on this trading estate a lot, for various reasons over the years, and I've never really been able to see the back of this building from memory, so I don't know that we would actually see a lot of this from the road, to be honest. So, what it, the finer details of it, I don't think are too important, because you won't be able to see it. I certainly haven't been aware of what's there now, anyway, so for my part, I would probably support the application as it is.
Councillor Hargreaves.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I couldn't not say anything. Actually, I have no problem with unfettered hours. If you look at modern day, many businesses are working now 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because the public expect them to, so I really, really don't have a problem. Yeah, it does look like an aircraft carrier, but then, it's a factory, so what? I don't really have a problem, it's in the right place. Had it been stuck in the middle of Farnham Park, then I would have a problem, but it is on an industrial estate, and as such, I would, I'm perfectly happy with it. Thank you.
Okay, well, as the Ward member, I also am going to back this particular application. I don't have a problem with 24-hour access to the building, it isn't in a residential area, I should think councillor Hill's probably about the nearest person living to it, and it's, I very much welcome the changes to parking and access. If you go down that little strip of Waterlane during the day, reversing trucks, and there's cars parked down both sides of the street, anything which can be done to improve that situation is positive, as far as I'm concerned. So, we move on to the recommendation, which is on your amendment sheet. The subject to the completion of a legal agreement in respect of infrastructure contributions by the 28th of February 2015, permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 18, set out on pages 151 to 155.
Sorry, Chair, I'm not sure if I updated you that the legal agreement has been signed up to, and it's on file, so that aspect of the proposal has been completed in accordance with recommendation A.
Thank you. Will you draw my attention, councillor Ward, or did you want to say something?
Both. I think we had a motion to defer, unless that has been withdrawn.
Councillor Ward, the position is that, if you wish to introduce a motion to defer, you must first defeat the motion to grant. A motion to grant being defeated does not automatically mean that the proposal is refused, it allows you then to introduce a motion to defer. We did this a few weeks ago on another application, and this is the way, I'm told, it has to be done. So, we have to decide on the proposal to grant this application, first of all, if it is lost, then you can introduce your motion to defer.
Chairman, can I come back? In seven years on this committee, I've never heard that before, and we have deferred numerous applications before we voted on them. I have an uncomfortable feeling you have been badly advised.
Councillor Ward, at a southern meeting, some weeks back, we were in exactly the same position, and we spent something like 25 minutes debating what the correct procedure was, and I'm reliably informed by democratic services that this is the correct way of doing it. We may not have done it in the past, but this is the way that it should be done, and this is the way that I'm told we must do it in the future.
Chairman, could that bit of advice go out to all members? Because like councillor Ward, in all the years I have sat on the planning committee of this council, this is the first time it's come this way round. Some time ago, in debating this item, I said I would like to defer it. Councillor Ward backed me up, and as far as I'm concerned, that's an amendment which is on the table, which we need to debate.
It isn't an amendment, it's a new proposal. As I say, a refusal of the permission to grant does not automatically mean that the application is lost, it allows you to introduce your motion to defer instead of a motion to refuse.
May I please ask that that piece of advice, an instruction, goes out to all members of council?
I'm sure that Emma will make sure that that happens, and if, for some reason, the powers that be in democratic services decide that they have changed their advice, then I'm sure we will do that, but at the moment, that is what I am assured we must do, and so that is what we will do this evening. So, can I first see, sorry, councillor Ward.
Chairman, I will of course defer to your views on this as chairman, but I have to say, this is totally illogical, that if you see something that you like, that you want a little bit more advice about, you first of all got to refuse something that you like in order to get some more information. The logic of this is tautological in the extreme, and I do not know where this advice came from, but as I say, in seven years, we have never heard of this before. Something here is very wrong.
Thank you, councillor Ward. If you wish to propose this as an amendment to the existing recommendation, and you have a second for that, which I presume you would have from councillor Frost, then we can certainly take an amended motion first. So, if you wish to do that, we can do that. Would you like to reword?
Very well, I would propose that the motion to grant be amended to defer this for further consideration.
I'd like to second.
Thank you both. Ladies and gentlemen, could we please then have a show of hands on the amendment? Those in favour of the amendment putting in a deferral of this decision?
Two.
Can I see those against the amendment?
Four, five.
The amendment is lost, so we now refer to the original recommendation, which is, permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 18, set out on pages 151 to 155, and informatives 1 to 8 on pages 156 to 157, and subject to the revised wording of condition 18. Can I see those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five.
And those against?
One.
And abstentions?
One.
Okay, that is then agreed, and
There's no recommendation B. There's no longer a recommendation.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, brings us to the end of the proposals. There are no items to consider in exempt session. That concludes the meeting for this evening. Thank you very much for your attendance and your patience. Goodnight.